For the month of December, we had twenty sales. We sold two hundred seventy-one point three zero gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of one thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. I had a visitor count of seven. For the month of January, we had twenty-three sales. We sold four hundred nineteen point six seven gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. I also had a visitor count of seven for January. For February, we had ten sales. We sold two hundred six point five three gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. My visitor count was three. For the month of March, we had twenty-five sales. We sold four hundred fifty-eight point three six gallons.
Four fifteen or sixty-eight?
Four fifty-eight.
Okay.
Point three six gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of two thousand one hundred forty dollars and fifty-four cents. I had a visitor count of five. For the month of April, we had twenty-one sales. We sold four hundred eighty-four point three nine gallons at four dollars and sixty-seven cents a gallon. A batch total of two thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and ten cents at a visitor count of five. For the month of May, we had twenty-two sales. We sold seven hundred nine point zero five gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of three thousand three hundred eleven dollars and twenty-six cents at a visitor count of eight. For the month of June, we had thirty-seven sales. We sold six hundred forty-two point two seven gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty cents. I had a visitor count of five. For the month of July, we had fourteen sales. We sold two hundred twenty-three point nine eight gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of one thousand forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Our visitor count was three. For the month of August, we had twenty-three sales. Sold three hundred sixty-four point eight seven gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of one thousand seven hundred three dollars and ninety-four cents. I had a visitor count of seven. And for the month of September, we had twenty-five sales. Sold four hundred forty-five point six three gallons at four dollars sixty-seven cents a gallon for a batch total of two thousand eighty-one dollars and nine cents. I had a visitor count of five. So, the combined batch total for just two thousand nineteen up to September, it totals eighteen thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. As of today, we currently have two thousand one hundred seventy-four gallons in the storage tank.
How much?
Two thousand one hundred seventy-four gallons. The card reader, I did replace the display, the circuit board. This is ordered and it took care of the problem. Everything works on there. Your amount of gallons you're pumping, your price, everything's fine there. The other issue I had, where we had to call the phone company, I troubleshoot, I couldn't figure out what it was responding to. We ended up tracing the problem down to a second manhole between the building and the card reader. Inside there, before the wires were connected, it was wrapped with black tape insulation tape and there was water inside the tape. So basically, once we unwrapped it and dried it all up, everything was fine. So I'm sure you guys got a bill for that. You didn't tell me until I was gonna be, but instead we're gonna be cheap.
I don't recall getting a large bill for it, so we'll keep an eye out.
Oh yeah, you'll be getting it. Then, oh, I wanted to mention, we had talked possibly about covering the card reader with a little box at one time. I think it'd probably be a good idea to still do something like that. You know, any kind of little plastic cover or something for it. It's starting to get, see the wear on it. Oh yeah, then I'd like to thank the public works department for going down there, cleaning up the airway, the air field. They did a really good job. They got the, on the east side, the entire length of the runway, and they cleaned up the dirt runway, both sides of it. You know, so we're actually, they got everything ready for our fifty-ten update, which is coming up in April. So we're ahead of the game and the last update we had, the issues were the vegetation on the side of the dirt runway, and that's done. And the only other thing left that we need to do is the taxi hold signs and the exit signs. And I got the quote when I had that done and these are for the signs that we have there in place, but we still need to get the hold signs as well. And it's mandatory. Here's a quote. It's about eight thousand dollars. This was back, it's probably a little more now.
This is, this says that it was quoted in two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
That price at the time was six thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. So you could probably add twenty percent to that.
Have we shop for any other vendors that can get a better price or is this the best thing we got? That's probably the only, Dan might know something more about that. Do you have any other?
Well, the price, the price being more than six thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, we'd have to go, we have to post it. We don't have to get, we don't have to get formal bids. We can get informal proposals, but we have to post that on our website. So we have to at least, and at least do that. So I would assume that we're gonna get more than one, but at the same time, I always try to, if we have the ability to reach out also, and if they wanna propose, we can get them. I usually get at least three bids.
And that one includes, the second one is the sign that got hit by, I guess, an airplane at one time and the insurance paid it off in the city. I don't know what happened to the money, but it's a sign that fits. That one's in there as well.
How'd the last come from? Twenty years ago?
It was a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Okay. Yeah, so we're ready.
And I think, didn't we get an insurance check for that?
Yeah, I think that's what I did.
We got an insurance check, but the city somehow, you know.
It doesn't get, well, it goes into our, it goes, even if it was, we get those checks, those go into our general fund. There, it doesn't go directly into this, into this year's budget. It goes into a general fund because it's not something that was budgeted for. If it's budgeted, it goes in there, but it's not, it goes in there. And then it's available for the following year. We have line items that we can't, that we have to follow, that we don't get to adjust.
Mr. Harrow, you have to know that the FAA keeps track of that and makes sure that it gets back to the airport. That's a big problem.
That's, our finance department will take care of that.
That's the second one that you got there. Since the Garcia plumbing fixed plumbing in the bathroom, I haven't had any more problems.
Good.
So that seems to prepare the problem there. I've had two water leaks between the building and the shed in the ground that I haven't cared. The lines, you know, there's a whole pop of lines. Took care of those as well. And then...
What about the bath, does water work in the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Out in the lobby?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, they're okay.
Mr. Turan, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask you to have a meeting with all of us, if we can have some type of informal meeting. So when we go check out the facilities, that we're all on the same page? Because somebody might differ from other, I hear people like, "Oh, the places run down." I go over there like, "What parts run down?" So I wanna make sure that consensus towards all of us and all of us are on the same page.
Yeah, we had one of those done too long ago.
Well, we can't, we cannot meet with the quorum unless, if you wanna do that, that's gotta be posted. And if, that's absolutely possible. We can do that. We would just call a special meeting and we can, we can do that if that's something you would like, but we just need to make sure that we have that posted.
Yes, God.
That was done when the friends thought they weren't going to have to take over. Now that we don't have to, you know, we all went down there to see and because we thought we were gonna have to deal with that.
That's right.
So that's why it was done, the friends did. The friends went down and saw that.
I'd like to ask whether the friends have a meeting, like with one of the board members, to make sure we're on the same page as well.
I'm one of them.
Oh. But I didn't hear anything in either team, so I'll call it down.
The, we gotta be a little bit careful because Ms. Sebold, Mrs. Sebold is part of that, so we can't have more than, even though she's on both, she can't, she can't represent, she can't say, "I'm only representing this one, not this one." She's there, she's gonna, she's gonna be a part of this commission.
Okay, well, 'cause I've totally heard this, what's going on. I'm vice chair. I think she should say, "Hey, this is what we went through, this is what we found out, newspapers, whatever." So we know what's going on instead of it's them against the board. I feel that, 'cause I haven't received anything. A lot of the information's been missing.
Mr. Soto, I would say that we would probably, this discussion's probably going a little bit off topic because it's the manager's report. I would love to, would love to, if you would like to talk to me, I definitely have met a couple of times with the friends of the airport. I'd invite for you to come and talk to me, then we could maybe strategically talk with some of the, some of the friends of the airport.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, my honor.
Okay. The, I think we're gonna need to get another roof quote. From my understanding, that was a verbal thing that got passed around and nobody seemed to get an answer on from Mr. Oldfield. So that's, we're gonna have to re-see that from beginning again.
We probably didn't get it then.
So, okay.
Which roof?
At the airport. At the airport, the main building? Where the coolers at, the leaks. And then, I just wanna mention that the cracks on the runway are getting worse. They're starting to open up pretty fast. But I see that's part of the, that five-year plan, that the roof is good. And the airport's still on extreme water restriction from NACO water. They haven't, they're still hauling water from NACO to their tank to supply everybody with water. I don't know how long that's gonna last. It's been a while. Didn't seem like they were gonna fix it anytime soon either. And that's about all I got. The next couple of days, what I'm gonna be doing is cleaning up the taxiway, getting rid of all the vegetation, and we'll get out there. And that's all I got.
The works director of the airport.
For the most part, most of the things I have to say were in our agenda here. The one thing I do have to, I would like to mention is that our contract with our airport manager has, had expired some time ago. And I'm working with our new, our city attorney to update that. I spoke with Mr. Turan and we agreed that we would like to extend that. So the city attorney is working on updating that contract and we should hopefully get that to counsel very soon.
Is it almost time for the new consultant?
I do not know that.
The consultant, are they every ten years?
It's every five years.
Every what?
Five years.
It's been over ten.
Oh, in all ten, okay. You're right.
I can look into that.
Nail piece by.
Okay, whole business, discuss jet A fuel at the airport.
Whole business, I'd like to just, gosh, refresh minds, people, I've been here a while. I have did some studies on fuel, jet A possibilities and funding. There's some graphs that cover that. And maybe we could revisit all that. Bring jet A fuel here to bring more traffic for helicopters and turbo crops. As well as, it just brings more traffic here, so the FAA recognizes that we're an active and not dying airport. I still have the numbers from all the vendors that I had before. I keep in close contact. And so also with that and refuelers, and I'd like to still keep that alive and invite the city to forego this and keep going. I've been here seven years and it's been the same issue. I think it's time to move forward. Okay, Mr. Wallace?
Actually, could you remind me, it's been three years since I was on the commission. Could you remind me about what your quotes were for, for a fuel farm?
A fuel farm for the jet A tanks, ten grand.
Ten grand?
That's correct. Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry. No, no.
No!
It was thirty grand. I have to get my numbers again. I did email them out. I'll refresh and make sure you guys are all tasked on the numbers. And they are current. And that's with the card swiping machine, but I believe we're gonna get a new one and it's gonna be wireless. Maybe we could put that in this package. So now we're not linking up to the phone that's dead. We can just go swipe and it's on with the internet. It's gonna cost eight grand more, but if we do the right financing or put in a grant, it should be, it's really good. They're willing to work with us. World Fuel, it's World Fuel, Mr. Gallegos. And he can get us fresh quotes. He's willing to work with us in regard and tech support.
What's his name again?
Mr. Gallegos.
Are you?
Can't think of his first name right now. Mr. Gallegos. I'll send you the email and refresh the copy of the bid, original bid, and the numbers of today. And same time, we can market ambulance, air ambulance, and of course, the single-engine air tankers, when they need fuel, there's a fire. Then you come here and get to New Mounts faster than going to Libby. And it's just gonna bring more numbers to this operations, to this airport. The more operations we get here, the FAA is gonna start leaning towards us in regard, funding and matching taxes. Marilyn, please.
I, we've discussed this before and we were all in agreement for this. When I talked to Jason Musselman, who's one of the consultants, he said we can't have that approved unless we fix the taxiway, unless the taxiway's in better shape. That's all he told me, so.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure I heard that. The only thing I can, I do know and can comment is that if we use the ACAP to have that installed, we have to fix the taxiway because that's part of, that is part of something that we're gonna do. If we're getting money from ADOT and the FAA, yes. And there are other things that need to get fixed before any of that can be done.
I looked at, I did a quick search online and there are a lot of fuel trucks available, you know. And cheapest one I found was a jet A one for forty-five hundred dollars. Problem, which means we could have jet A like that. It could refill, and you could just drive it up and fill up the fuel, not wait for deliveries and pay a delivery charge. The issue with the fuel truck is somebody's got to be certified and to do it. So you mean, so somebody's gotta be able, you can't do that as a self-serve. Somebody's gotta be there.
Is it more for that license, like a, is it for a commercial license and stuff like that?
No, not at all, 'cause I did that for the county. I did that for six years and the only time you needed license is to have a hazmat and to transport it off airport property and having proper insurance, so.
But if it's sitting on the property here, as long as there's somebody to run the truck, for forty-five hundred, we could have jet A next week. So that's one possibility.
Some of the filters on those trucks are more costly than a truck. So, got something that needs to be checked out.
Oh, sure, would have to be.
That's from experience and working the county. Filters run about two thousand a year. And they have to be every year, have somebody come and service them. Or if we get qualified, then we order the service and we order the filters ourselves and make sure you have qualified technicians there. Who's been versed by our vendor, then it's gonna cost maybe a thousand dollars at the most. And it has to be certified every year, placard showing that we're in good standing, we have good filters and so forth. And it's very safe, FAA loves it and get a good rating.
The other alternative is the fixed tank like Richard was talking about. There's one right out there right now that's for sale. Eight thousand gallon double-wall tank with the pump and the fuel pump, the hose, and the whole works, ready to go. Thirty-nine thousand or best offer.
Best offer.
Or best offer. So, and there's the whole thing, right there, with a card reader. Electronic card reader included.
Wow.
Yeah, card readers are very expensive. I'm surprised to see this.
This one, this one's in Shreveport, Louisiana. We'd have to, you know, you'd have to pay to get it here. But that looks like a real option there because then we don't go into all those restrictions that apply if we get it through the FAA funding. This would avoid all that and we could go in too.
And these double-wall tanks are EPA grade, so we don't have to worry about digging trenches in cement walls for containment. They're, they're certified.
So this includes the card reader and everything for less than forty thousand.
Wow.
Or best offer. So.
Nothing wrong with it?
No, supposedly, this is ready to go. This is supposedly ready to go. You know, but it's in Shreveport, Louisiana. They upgraded their fuel farm and they've got the pump and the whole works and the card reader, electronic card reader, ready to go. So that, that would be a way to get it real quick. Yes. If we did, funding's issue. But that would be...
Again, I've been pushing the funding for years now.
I know you have.
EDAP, economic development grant, it's up to three million. And we can probably put this on the airport improvement without seeking funds from FAA, which gotta do some matching, like two percent of that. But it can help with all the infrastructure, water issues, fuel issues, and possibly some asphalt issues. You know, us doing it without, well, you know, most efficient way. Yeah, look up E-D-A-P on grants.gov.
Follow that.
Okay, anything else on jet A?
Uh-huh.
If not, we'll go on to update on the status of friends of the Bisbee Airport, Inc. And then World Label Play at the airport.
Okay, I had sent an email to Peter to see if he could be here, but I didn't hear back from him. Once Jesus came on board, he said, you know, the city could do everything and that we weren't really necessary, which is a good cut, not necessary, but we would, you know, if we, I assume our role, we were not sure yet because we haven't heard what our real role is, is having fundraisers and making money for us, for the airport. Is that true or?
I more than welcome the friends of the Bisbee Airport to help in any way, any way they would like to help. My, what I would say is, is it don't, it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be more difficult if we don't, we don't, the city does not run the airport with grants and everything that has to do with it. And we are more than capable to do it.
That's good.
Historically, we would have the ninety-nines fly down and we have these fly-ins and pancakes and fundraisers. It's really good. So a lot of fuel going down.
Those types of things are the types of things that I believe that would definitely help. Those are, you know, when we do, if you were talking about doing fundraisers, fly-ins, those types of things. Only because of our level of staffing, I'm talking about the number of people we have here, that would be very difficult for us to run.
And also occasionally, back then, we'd have remote control enthusiasts. So we'll have to just put a notice to airman to make sure that we're, get somebody competent, licensed pilot preferably, to make sure that other people flying in know that we're having this event and to be careful, if anything happens, we just get our remote controls, airway land until the airplane's gone and we'll go back and have these. It can be done.
Yeah, Bill Crowe has a, Bill Crowe's brother has, is a member of the radio control RC club. And they would like to come down here. In fact, they came to the airport and did a little demonstration. And unfortunately, the plane caught on fire. It was very close to the fuel farm. And it was very close to the fuel farm, which was not...
An extensive one.
Huh?
An extensive one.
So, yeah, oh, his plane?
So I should take precautions on those.
So, but we discussed times of the year and, yeah, times when it's not good because there's too much wind. So that's something that we can work on with Bill Crowe and his brother. He'll figure it out.
Anything else on that subject? With the new business, discussion of current status of the airport with the FAA.
So, the status of the airport with the FAA is that we have our five-year plan. We cannot accept any grants from the FAA, from ADOT, until we get our residential to the fence agreement taken care of. Now, I know that some people were under the impression that that was approved by the FAA when in fact it was not. So I have, we've done some research before Mr. Pocken left and before the county attorney, Mr. Britt Hanson. And so we did some research then and we were able to dig up some old emails. I've since reached out to the FAA. And we are planning to meet here in the next couple of weeks so we can, we can renew those, these discussions. Essentially, what the through-the-fence agreement issue is, is that the FAA needs some more information on the other business that's going on there. I may need some help for when we, to gather that information. Once I know exactly what they need. Once we know exactly what they need, we can take the agreement that's drafted right now, modify, we can have our city attorney modify that, get the information they need. And I think we can take care of that fairly quickly. Once that's done, we should be able to start moving forward and start accepting the grants that are offered to us.
Yeah. They keep calling it a residential through fence and it's commercial property. It's not really residential.
That's, I know that. And that's, that's probably gonna be one of the issues. We need to figure out what they need to know.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't know exactly what we want. Now, my attorney that I've got, because I have now two needed taxiways. The last one that Britt Hanson did have a year license that he wanted us to sign, which meant that we renew it only a year. Well, if the city decided not to renew that license, then we're all out of luck. And that's my business, you know, that's my business there, which is reason... In fact, you're the one who, remember, found, just said, "Oh, well, the city was not in line for grants because they didn't have enough base aircraft."
Well, yeah, we counted the number of aircraft that were on the field.
So he said, "Oh, are you counting the ones that Maryland's placed?"
No.
And they were. So once they did, we had the most, I think, of little airplanes in the county.
Yeah.
Actually, we went from the bottom fifth of the state, the very bottom, to up above half in terms of aircraft.
So we have to let them know that we're...
Well, they, we need, we need to do whatever they, we need to figure out what's acceptable to them. So whatever's acceptable to them, then we can come back to the owners of those properties and see if that's acceptable. Otherwise, if we don't get this taken care of, we're exactly what we are, so we won't move.
And we've had grants since we've been there, so. And the FAA indeed knew we were beating there because we followed the airport protocol, so. Or we wouldn't have done it.
Were there any other questions for me?
I hate to bring this up, but it's a legal standpoint, the city and a conflict of interest possibly? Regarding the through-the-fence and members here?
Um, we're not voting.
I just wanna make sure that nobody gets burned.
We're not, we're not voting on anything. We're just having a discussion.
Okay, no, I'm just making sure it was good because it's, I don't want the FAA to come back and burn some people.
I'll double-check. How about we double-check?
Thank you.
Okay, discussion of setting goals for improvement of the airport.
Oh, yeah, goals for improvement. I believe that as a committee or a board here, we should have a timeline and with objectives.
with objectives for every quarter, semi-quarter, uh, so we could, so we can meet these timelines because, uh, historically, rather we get an agreement to something, the, the command changes and so we're back to square one. So I'd like to see that we have this timeline and we're moving forward, so when we have the new players that come in, uh, city directors or managers, whatever, that we're, they catch up to what we've been discussing. And so we have something that's very visible, very, uh, yeah, very visible, so we can see, okay, last year we've been attempting this, how far did we get and where are we with this? I think we need to establish a timeline so we know exactly what our goals are and it shows that, you know, marketing, how much fuel we sold, when are the peak seasons, uh, traffic, when can we do it, or how can we market more personnel to come in, including jet A fuels, including, uh, uh, stuff we've been discussing later today. But I, I, but I'd love to have a timeline so it's visible to everybody, well, they have to achieve, well, they haven't achieved much because of some, and then we can say, well, we haven't achieved because, you know, illness or I was absent or something happened, and we'd have a forum, but something in that, in that, that fashion, so we know where we're going with this.
Like in a year basis?
I know, I'd say quarterly, quarterly. And, and something on, on the, uh, on the website showing, here's the progress, here's what we're aiming for, here's what we are, and here's where we're falling, so we can get support and we have data. And so when people say, well, you guys just have meetings, and, no, we have data now, and that's what I'm getting at. Anything else, anybody else on the next, next item?
Yeah. Discussion on ACIP airport capital.
And that's a paper.
Yes, I, I provided the, the updated ACIP, um, recently, which I think we submitted that maybe a month, maybe two months ago, um, to the FAA and ADOT. We did make some, some modifications to the old ACIP. We put the, the first project on the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, um, which is, starts in October. Um, but, um, that's because we need to get, we need to get our, that through the fence agreement taken care of, that's what we'll work on, once we're ready for that, we're ready to move forward with that. And then, uh, the, the next project for twenty-twenty-two is actually the, to install jet A, uh, fuel farm. That can change if, if things happen between now and then, and we can do different types of things.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, five hundred and fifty thousand. The city share and loan almost buy that, that one Louisiana wreck, the city, city share.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what's, it's just an estimate, this would be with engineering. I know that when I was talking to Mr. Musselman, that there were some other, um, conflicts that he was worried about, so that may, that may include some conflicts for installing, um, underground things.
I'd like this comment, uh, Mr. Musselman's not the only say so.
Oh, I know. Mr. Musselman works for us, he's a consultant, he's, he's given some, some advice, it's not, he doesn't get to say what happens, uh, ultimately, the city council gets to say.
Okay, good, because there's other, there's other consultants that charge less and have a lot of knowledge, the experience, it speaks for itself.
Okay.
They put it out for bits.
These are the ones we chose, Richard.
Well, in this county, it sounds like Musselman owns it, I'd like to explore other.
He's under, he's under contract right now, and so.
Oh, we all voted, so we all voted to choose him. We entered, we interviewed three or four different companies to do this. This is the company this board accepted.
Okay. When I see numbers like that, it's like, okay, uh, I'd like just something more user-friendly, airport-friendly, but apparently that's their business.
Um, and then the, the, the last project that we have listed on here, then in the five-year plan, is the, the PAPI system. So, that's, that's.
So this is putting the taxiway out way beyond twenty-twenty-five?
Uh, I'm not quite sure, I thought, I thought that was actually in there, I'll have to do some research on that.
And that's millions, not, not these small, that's not these small numbers that compare.
Yes. Well, actually, I think, if I remember right, when I was here three or four years ago, we thought about to try to get it down to an amount that we could actually accumulate enough money for by sharing with the other communities. We decided to split the taxiway into two parts. If we could fund half of the taxiway renovation by, by cutting it north of the apron and, and do it into two parts, and I think that's what we had put into, into the, uh.
That's what.
I thought we did, I thought we actually, we talked with Musselman, he was even down here, and we talked about doing, putting that into the ACIP.
He, uh, he's the one that suggested doing it in parts.
Yep.
I did, I suggested it to him, he agreed, so that was my idea, was to, to split it in half because it was too, we'd never accumulated a couple million, but we could do it in two pieces and get the first part, which was the important one, you know, the part closest to the apron and, and the north end of the field, where we have the most people coming in and closest. So that was, that was the idea, and I thought that got put into the ACIP.
And it's, it's more friendly because that the historical went from the south and we could just land and just take.
Yeah, and you land and that's, that's the end, it gets the most use, so that was the idea. So, I thought that was in there and I, I.
I don't know that was on the, uh, yeah, I don't remember the ACIP back then.
Well, I will tell you that it's a good thing because we get to update this yearly, so.
Yes.
We can, we can definitely update.
Yeah, well, we used to have a, a say in it, that the city would come to us and say, what do you want, the public works person, what do you want on the ACIP? That stopped several years after Jeff Swartz left, that, that stopped.
I would tell you, that's the way that, um, I, as the, uh, the staff liaison, like to be, have the, have the committees and commissions be a part of those types of things. This is our first meeting, so I hope that you anticipate being able to be part of those.
Okay, discussion on the budget.
This is all for the federal funding. Um, actually, Richard, are you, were you going to come back next meeting with, with a set of the proposals, the updated numbers for putting in the jet A, as, in terms of that, because that's, one of, this is actually relevant to this because five hundred and fifty thousand for jet A, if we can do it for forty, uh, that, it, it would, I would think it would behoove us to make a motion to go to seek funding for that.
You can't make a motion on this tonight, but anyway, um, it's, it's, they're not worded, it's not worded right.
What's the?
You can't say, if you, you can't, if it just says discussion, we can only discuss.
We can have discussion if there's something you all would like to add to the, add to the, um, the agenda for next time to have.
Oh, you specifically asked to say a motion?
You have to, it has to say discussion and possible action.
Ah, thank you.
Remember?
It's been a while.
Well, yeah, and then, and now that I'm not, no longer doing the agenda, I didn't put it in there, I'll have to discuss that with, uh, Lorena, who's.
So something, something regarding the, where are we at, we are, um.
We're on number three.
The budget.
We're still on number three.
We're on number three still?
Yes.
So on number three, what you, you're asking to have something on the agenda for next time so that you can vote on?
I'll, I'll provide, uh, the newest, latest numbers on fuel farm, cost, financing, and so forth, and if you want to, I can introduce the, uh, the grant I've been working at, the EDAP grant, that's wide open.
Absolutely, we can add that, we can add those types of things on the agenda for next item, but I'm not quite sure what you would be voting on.
Yeah.
Oh, well, total infrastructure.
You wanna vote on?
Fuel, uh, taxiway if possible, building, and any upgrades. If, it's a three million dollar grant?
Oh, for his.
Um, but, okay, so.
So, okay, I'll show you the numbers of how much it's gonna cost for the jet A fuel farm.
So, so you would show numbers?
Uh-huh.
And then what action would be taken? If you're just showing us numbers?
We need, it, it's, it's a, uh, we just need a public entity to sign into that grant and say, yes, we're gonna apply for this.
Okay, so that would be, that would be something that you would say, you're gonna show us a grant, you would say you'd want to.
And here's the actual cost for the consultant.
The motion is, is we would, we would request that the city council.
Yes, that is something that would, that, that would be something that you would vote on, that would go to council.
Would sign to, uh, to approve the grant application.
That we would be.
Be signatory. Being the signatories for the grant.
And that's something that would go to council.
Uh, Richard?
Yes.
Uh, are, are you taking account, any engineering that might have to be done?
That'll be written in as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and Musselman's, uh, the, the, yes, thank you.
So, so what I would, so what I would ask then is, when we do our agenda for next time, that when Lorena does go, reach out for agenda items, do we make sure that we, you, you respond her so that she can include those?
Okay.
So they include that and say?
Most definitely, and, um, hopefully nobody rejects, but people here get the email what's on the agenda, they can add or take away from it.
You would, you would add, I wouldn't, I would suggest that we add, I mean, this is kind of a little bit going off of from where, but we could still ACIP stuff.
I just wanna get rid of that last time.
Oh, yes, yes, I understand. Just, just when she, when she solicits what you, what to put on for the agenda, just respond with items that you would like.
Yeah, to her.
And then if some of them overlap, they might, they might overlap, then we'll consolidate them in a, in, in an agenda item.
Cause this is pretty much a blanket, and so we've covered from the most needed to things down the line.
Okay, well.
And what I discussed with Marilyn, just having a private meeting with her, and I would really like to see water get piped in here, that'd be nice.
Okay.
But we got fuel lines and all that stuff.
That's down on my list.
There is no water suppression at the airport.
Okay, that can be.
Well, that's coming up later.
Fire suppression, yeah.
That's number nine.
Okay, we're done.
That's my number nine, Marilyn, later.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, discussion on courtesy car.
Oh, we didn't do the budget, did we?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's where we were.
We were talking about, kind of, it was kind of in between.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I don't know what the budget is, okay.
I, I, if you wanted to, if you wanted specific questions on the actual budget that's approved from the, by the city council now, I can answer those if you will.
We don't have a copy, so.
I have it, I have it here, I mean, I didn't, we didn't provide a copy, so.
Okay.
Um, but we can, we can definitely.
Maybe you'll be able to.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, historically, speaking about the, uh, the, uh, car, airport courtesy car, uh, there'd be a time when we'd almost have one, and then it'd be changing the guard, or somebody didn't feel the city, it's not right or legal, I'm, I'm unclear because it's been like three or four years this has been going on, or maybe more so, but there's, there's, uh, many people who really, in the city and the airport, and customers flying in who really would like to use it, and it's gonna just bring more and more, and I guess we can discuss other things in regards like B and Bs and how they can help out, correct?
Uh, there was, there was a, a group in, in Bisbee at one time, and Bill and I used to go to it, uh, and they built the Copper Queen, and it was a business area, and we talked to them, and none of them at that time was willing to come out, really, and they don't have extra people to come out to the airport to get, to get, uh, people. So, but I, I loaned my truck, um, Eric Swisher loaned his, and we have one of the members, or one of the people who's down there at the airport, uh, the guy who has the, our guy's car thing out here, he has a car he will give to us, to the friends to, to use for.
Great, and, and I guess the friends will help out with the insurance details?
Well, then, yeah, I mean, I don't, it, it's my own truck, I, I let any, I let people use it all the time, they come back with a fuel tank and that's nice.
That's, that, my suggestion for a courtesy car would be that the friends of the airport somehow or another acquire a vehicle and do insurance, that's, that's something outside of the city.
Yeah.
Um, we would try to accommodate with some parking or whatever, maybe some, maybe trying to get, um, some sort of lockbox or a key or those types of things, I think that's something that's appropriate for the, the city to, to help out with, but providing a courtesy car is gonna be very difficult. I know that other airports have them, I, um, they, I, I couldn't tell you, I, they, how they do it or whatever, but I will tell you that, um, I have been a part of the two airports, well, three, this is the third one, and that, and all of them at one point provided a courtesy car and they no longer have them for most likely insurance reasons, and it's gonna be very difficult.
It is, I believe.
So, I, that would be something if we would, you know, going back to where the friends of the airport, that could help out. And not, and not to say it's completely, you know, we wouldn't be, won't have anything to, we, we, I think the city could help out with lockboxes, those types of things, parking areas and stuff.
Excellent.
Okay, discussion on having more meetings.
E teams. I know it doesn't have an S on it.
I would like to go forward with this.
I could see every other month.
Every other month's great, because of, every quarter, things change so much and then we're still, and we're just getting further behind.
For years, for many years, we met monthly, and we had maybe seven or nine people, we had, we met, of course, in the old city hall, that, it was full, we had lots of people. Before we had to start meeting at, on city premises, we met in Don's Hanger or at the airport, we could have twenty people there for the meetings, and they were all interested pilots, it was so much enthusiasm, uh, they worked on putting up, uh, on the roof, they put up, uh, an antenna, uh, we had workdays and the pilots and people did, did lots of the work.
We had civil air patrol from service to come up here more often, they just was, just loved this place.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it's, uh.
So, this is what.
But anyway, the meetings were once a month.
This is what I would suggest then, since right now the meetings are already planned through the end of the year, we probably just have one more.
One more.
One more, if you wanted to have one in between the next regularly scheduled meeting, we can ask for a special session meeting, that's, that's perfectly acceptable, I'd be moved.
Our next one's just two months because we're, we shoved this one back.
If you want to.
The next one is two months.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, so if you want, during the next regularly scheduled meeting, um, if you would like to move the meetings to a, a every other month type thing, let's put an agenda item on there so that you all can vote on that, that's the next one. Yeah, I, I split an action item, so you guys can vote on it and say you want to have it every other month, um, as a staff liaison, I'll be there if I'm, if I'm close, unless I have something else, if there's something else that's really, really important, some, somebody from the staff would be there.
Okay, discussion on hotels, B and Bs.
So, this was my item, it was one of the things I started to talk about, uh, before I left, and it was, I was using examples of places like, uh, Shelter Cove in California and places like that, that where people fly in and you, you know, they, the people would, the local places, B and Bs or hotels and stuff, would provide a pickup for the people if it wasn't that far away, and, and they would get the person there, and, but, you know, they would, each, low, each person who would agree to do this, I think what we would do is put together a packet for the hotels, B and Bs and stuff, and somebody needs to actually sit down and meet with each of the people that owns one of these and say, here's how it works, you know, they're pilots, okay, they come, they tend to come in, they tend to spend money, they, uh, they're going to stay here for probably two nights, uh, but you can set a minimum number of nights and stuff in order to get a ride from the airport to your hotel, you'll have them there, they won't, you know, and, and they're going to be there at your location, spending money in here, and they'll probably come back if they really liked Bisbee, uh, but the, one of the things they have to do is they have to be able to, uh, specify, uh, their cancellation policy, because these are pilots and the weather isn't always cooperating, so, uh, one of the things before you want to be able, we would want to be able to add them to a list of locat, you know, of, uh, hotels, et cetera, where they could stay, they'd have to have a cancellation policy that was, you know, pilot-friendly for pilots, that type of thing. So you'd have to get something like that worked out and how that would go for them. And then, uh, you know, we'd add it to, I would say, you know, to AirNav and ALPA airports and things like that, so when people click on the Bisbee Airport, up comes a list of accommodations. So you'd have to get something like that worked out and how that would go for them, and then, uh, you know, we'd add it to, I would say, you know, to Air Nav and AOPA airports and things like that, so when people click on the Bisbee airport, up comes a list of accommodations with links to their websites, a pilot page on their websites, where, where there would be all the information for pilots to sign up for their locations. And I know that there, some of the newer places only have one room, you know, Airbnb or VRBO, but I've seen their cars, I walk right by one of them that says Casita such and such, and it's just for the one whole, you know, they've got a courtesy car, for the people who come into Bisbee, they can use for the weekend, that type of thing, so there are cars like that, only, and then some of them would give the people a car to use, I, I think that would be a selling point for some of the VRBOs or Airbnb's, is, is, yeah, and yes, we've got a little car here you can use in Bisbee, you know, that type of thing, but, but you gotta get them from the airport, pick them up, bring them in, and, uh, whatever rates you would charge pilots, so, that, that type of thing. So I think that's something that if we put a packet together, one could approach the different, uh, all the different lodgings in Bisbee, and see which, how many of them would actually, uh, they're gonna get, what they're gonna fill an empty room, you know?
Now, twenty years ago, when I was manager here, we had this system going on, it was very successful, the coffee companies, the hotels, everybody, and they would even bring somebody down here to pick them up, so if we could revisit that again, that'd be wonderful, but now we have the population to do it, back then, it was just struggling, you know, all business, but now we got.
So, so that's, that's one of my, one of my ideas is, is we put together a packet like that.
I think as a committee of one, you should do that.
As soon as I retire in January, right now I'm totally swamped.
All right.
But after the, and, after the beginning of the year, I could put a packet together like that for them, well, we would need a, we'd have to have an action item because we want to be able to list these, not just on Air Nav and, and, uh, AOPA airports and stuff, but we'd also want to have the link to, do we still have the airport site on the city website?
Yes, and that's where I was wait, waiting for you, if you're going to be excluding certain ti-, certain, um, residential things, I think we need to make sure that we, we talk to our city attorney that.
Excluding?
If, if, if you're saying, here's a list of certain, uh, accommodations that you can go to, and somebody asks, can I go, can I be on that list?
As long, as long as they want to.
Then you're excluding them, so I think we would, we would need to visit.
We could sign a memorandum of understanding or letter of intent to do business, just to just make sure that everybody.
I would suggest that we talk to the city attorney and make sure that we're not doing something that we should, if we listed on our website.
Yeah, do, or that would be an action item for the, for us to propose in the city attorney's ball.
I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example, cause I'm gonna do something very similar with public works department and, um, traffic control devices, um, if somebody is willing to come into, to the city, if, cause we don't have any traffic control companies within the city of, of Bisbee, maybe they know there's some in Tucson, there's some further away, if they're willing to come here, I'll put them on the list, if they say I don't want to be here, that's fine, but if there are people that say I want to be on the list, that's where I say we would suggest, it's, let's talk to the city attorney to make sure that's okay, put it on other people's website, if you guys want to, if you guys want to put together a packet to go out and, and, and find out which accommodations we're willing to do with what you're asking, that's something you can do, but I would say if we put it on our city website, let's make sure we, we're, we're doing things on the city attorney's website.
Yeah, we'd have to be probably a standardized form and, and with little checkboxes saying.
That, that probably gets around.
They, they offer a cancellation policy for pilots, they.
That probably will get around whatever, that probably.
Whatever meets, whatever it takes to meet the law, that's, that sounds good.
That, I'll definitely work with you all to, to get something appropriate on our website.
Okay, discussion on investigating possibility of bringing an air ambulance operation to the airport, two possible numbers.
Um, I heard, one of the things I heard when I came back to Bisbee was, is that we had an opportunity to have an air ambulance here, they tried to rent one of the houses down there, but the person wouldn't rent it, it's been on, whose house has been on the market forever?
Oh, that's Tom Bailey's.
Yeah, they wanted to rent it, but he wouldn't rent it to them, and we could add an air ambulance thing located right here in Bisbee, which would be great for health, safety, and fuel sales.
I think the fire service also would.
And the fire service, all of them would.
The forest, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
He lost three hundred and whatever, seventy-five or ninety thousand dollars worth of.
Yep. Yeah, so it's been on the market for how many years?
I don't know.
Eight years at least, so. Okay, but here's, here's my idea, okay, they were willing to rent a place like that, the people, there's, there's a lot of competition in that, there's a lot of money to be made in that, um, we have a really great location, we're, we're right on the path from Douglas to, to Tucson, and, and we've got Copper Queen right here and everything else right here, uh, we'd be an ideal location, um, they would generate a lot of fuel sales to us, et cetera, um, the, the ones that went in up at St. David had to buy their land and everything up there, right? So, one, one of the, one of the things is we can't, the city can't sell the land to somebody like this, but you can do a ground lease on like South of Eric's Hanger, we could give, you, you could, one of the incentives you could hold out to them would be a ninety-nine year ground lease for an air ambulance service. As a big incentive, you get the land and stuff, and that would be something to be, that we could, uh, potentially bring in something that would really increase the activity and, uh, bring a source of funding to the airport.
Yeah, we, and there is one ground lease, ground lease down there, that one hires on.
Right.
And, yeah, we set, we set up ground leases, um, like the city attorney and, um, uh, Bill and another friend and I, we, we did all that stuff to get the ground lease going.
Mm-hmm.
And it's on the city's website, and they've still got on there a guy who was running the airport many years ago, that hasn't been updated, so it needs to be updated, but we found all that out when, um, Buzz was looking into, my, because he bought Mike Carpple's Hanger, and he's got the ground lease there, and then he's still keeping, I think, the lease, the ground lease on the property next to it, because he's thinking about building more there, so, there is some.
There's a precedent.
There's new, there's new interest to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think that'd be an action item for our next meeting, if the mayor and mom take a motion that the city investigate the idea of, uh, bringing in an air ambulance, uh, service with the idea of offering a ground lease as a, uh, an incentive.
Right. And doing a ground lease on city property, just make sure that we're, uh, in compliance with the, uh, water and sewage and so forth, uh, these companies have been in their budget, and we make it feasible for them to come in, that improves commercial operations out of here, that means that they just up our numbers, commercial operations, every, every flight's an operation, that means they're willing to give us more funding because we have commercial operations and the needs of the community.
The problem down there is going to be getting water, since we, Naco waters are tricky.
Next item.
And, 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 you know, they wouldn't have sewer, they'd have to have.
We'd have to put a lift station in, pump station.
After putting what?
A pump station.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, because, you know, we, we're on, we thought we had, we were on an aquifer, but we're on crevice water, so.
On what?
Crevice water.
Oh.
Which means I have, uh, an auxiliary, uh, twelve, is it one thousand or twelve hundred? Twelve hundred gra-, uh, gallon tank, so that if we have a season when we don't have rain, and I'm very careful with my water, that, that there is, there won't be water, so, and I know they've got a, probably in their office, if they have an office, they're gonna have to have bathrooms.
Okay, so I'd bet that's an action item for next time.
Okay, discussion of seeking landing rights airport.
No, we, we didn't do the opportu-, the one before that, nine.
Number nine, opportunities on grants, um, my understanding is this is now an opportunity zone running down, all the way down towards Naco, Bisbee Junction, right, it's now.
Warrant in the airport are an opportunity zone.
They're in the warrant, is an opportunity zone, so I think we should, one of the things is we should, uh, encourage the city to explore opportunity zone grant opportunities to provide water to the airport, as Marilyn said earlier, we have no firefighting capability, there's no hydrants, we're on a trickle from Naco, and, and, uh, what was it, we're now in an extreme water restriction, uh, from Naco, and that's never been adequate, we have no fire restrictions, that, uh, under the ACIP, you can put in for, uh, fire suppression and, uh, grants for safety and fire suppression, they would pay for, the water lines from the airport boundary and the hydrants and all that for the airport itself.
From, from the city.
But.
Three million dollars is what, in us, that was, us, a few years ago, to bring water down to the airport, it was three million dollars, from, from, you know, from, from, uh, Arizona water, not coming up from Naco, cause they don't have much water, but from Arizona water, because, and, I mean, we've, we've all, all, all the property owners, you know, we've been, tapped into that.
Right, for sure, so one of the ideas would be if they look into alternatives for bringing that water in there, uh, the idea is, is that number one, safety for the airport, but the other thing is, is the, it would, um, and if we had an air ambulance and stuff, they would want more water probably, and finer hydrant or, in that type of thing, but also, uh, the city has a big chunk of property just north of the airport, which could be light industrial, linked to the airport, that, that, that property right now without any water is pretty much worthless.
Right.
With water, it suddenly becomes, uh, something that somebody could, uh, develop, you know?
It just can't have things too high because it's, it's in there, that's, um.
I know. Yeah, it, it's, it's the same, you know, it's, the issue of, it would be the, you know, like around, any, yeah, any light industry around the airport's gotta be low, so it would have to be low, but it would be, it would give the city an incentive because that, that property's gotta be worth something, it's, how many acres? Eighty?
I think it's eighty, they've, they've talked about it before, I, I think the, uh, I Bisbee committee may have, uh, talked about that.
Yeah, there was, it's a lot of acres, you could build a lot of stuff on it, but, uh, but it needs, it needs.
When they found out there was no water, they.
With no water, nobody could build anything on, so that's another thing that one, in terms of linking things to that, so that's another item that we, that I think we'd like to have investigated into that, and maybe look at alternatives to Arizona waters rates for putting in some piping.
Okay, now, landing rights airport designation.
What does that mean?
Okay, what a la-, okay, um, there are international airports, right, that are, that are designated by the secretary of the treasury, where flights can come in from out overseas and stuff, uh, Bisbee Douglas International is an international airport that's listed on the, you know, as a, a, one that international flights can come into, uh, the second category below that is what's called a landing rights airport, customs and border protection can designate an airport as an airport that people can land at, Nagales is one that they can, people fly in from Mexico in their planes, um, even a Douglas municipal is a landing rights airport, you can fly in from Mexico and land at Douglas municipal, you can't land at Bisbee. So one of the ideas would be to see about getting Bisbee designated as one, a landing rights airport, so that people coming to like the Baja Bush pilots and other people flying back from Mexico, right now you don't have a lot of choices, and if you look on the websites and stuff, nobody wants to go to Bisbee Douglas International or Douglas International, because it, you can wait an hour or two for customs to show up, because they even.
I think they differ, I've been down there and they get it within ten minutes.
Oh, well, there's a lot of people, complaints are the ones that get filed are the ones that get stuck.
I worked there and I.
I've flown in and out, there are a lot coming back from Mexico, and that had no problems.
No problems, okay, but, but it, that, be that as it may, we're, we are actually closer to port of entry, customs and border protection than either of the, even Douglas municipal is not as, it's fifty percent longer for them to get to there than it would be from here to come up here.
Yeah, I think it's about ten to fifteen minutes.
It's only six minutes driving time from our port of entry.
But after the phone calls and everything, who knows, but, but if you do that, cause they do it properly with the flight plan, they call in advance, there should be no problem.
Yeah, but anyway, we're, we're close, and there's, uh, and if we do that, we're probably likely to get more air traffic, um, yeah, because I, and then, anybody going up to Albuquerque or any, or that type of thing, New Mexico, we're on a more straight line distance than going to Nagales and stuff, so we would be a potential to pick up a lot of, uh, uh, pilots coming back and forth from Mexico.
Especially since we have the cheapest fuel around.
And that's the other thing, our, our, our fuels, right now our fuel is almost a dollar cheaper than Nagales, so if, if they could land here instead, for a dollar less a gallon, when you're pumping, putting in fifty, sixty gallons, that, they will stop here instead.
Well, and there's a lot of traffic that people don't know about, I live there, so I know there's a lot of tra-, there's a lot more traffic.
Yep, so, so one of the ideas was this is a way to drive more traffic to our airport, we have the cheap fuel, people look at, pull up on your Garmin pilot or whatever, we're the green dot in southeastern Arizona, everybody else is yellow or red, Nagales right now is red, cause their fi-, fuel prices are so high.
And it's, uh, he's really right, marketing aspect, like if you look at that, they come here, they land, and all of a sudden they have weather problems or, uh, maintenance problems or something, just go in a hotel and have a good time and figure out the problem, so, uh, Douglas, to get to the airport, Bisbee, uh, Douglas International, to, to get a taxi out there, it takes twenty minutes, um, there, and, uh, Nagales, same thing.
Yeah.
Here, it's a little much closer, and it's more accommodating, just, cause the hotels and B and Bs, good point, good point.
It'd be nice if we had an A and P here, closer.
Yeah, but anyway, that's the idea is we should, I think, action item for next time then is to, to actually put forward the motion to try to seek the, um, landing rights airport designation for the Bisbee airport.
Okay, discussion on the airport sweeper use and minimum annual earthworks.
All right, um, I want to back up Mike a little bit, thank you very much for sending that radar and odor and stuff out, it hasn't happened in a long time.
So just a little, just a little to add on that, um, the city council did approve a few months back, um, and a new, uh, work order management system, and so whenever you all have something that you need to get done over there at the airport, um, you can go online, you can create your own request, or you can call, and we can schedule that, now that we have this work order system, we're, we're, we're a lot better able to manage our, our work management.
I don't know if you ended up with that equipment out there longer than you expected, or what the hell you expected, but, um, um, we, we really got a lot of stuff done, there's, on this, it says, what I wanted to get at was, there's a, there's kind of a minimum amount of things that we need to do over and over and over again, and, and one of them is there's a road that goes along the perimeter fence, some of it on the west side is, is just, it's all gullies and got wiped out, and, and we simply need to make a new road, the, the FAA prefers the perimeter road to be just inside the fence, um, it makes it easy to fix the fence, but on our north side and our east side, if we, if the road's good enough to run the mower through there, it gets a little pressure from the cows, so, cause there is, on the north side, there's a water tank right there, and so we get a lot of pressure from the cows over there, so we can keep it, we can get it, get the mower in there and mow through there, it'd be really good, so there's a, there's a corner in the fence, um, that's, that's parallel to, to the east-west taxiway, and we don't have a really good access from that corner out to the, to the runway, it's only fifty, sixty yards.
I think they took care of that, yeah?
I, I hope so.
Yeah, he told me, well, told me today that they took care of it.
Well, I didn't get back out.
I haven't gone out there yet to check it, but he said they did it.
Yesterday, yesterday morning, it wasn't, it wasn't done yet, but I know those guys saw me, I dove. saw me. I double-checked. I drove the perimeter the other day. I know they were watching.
Yeah, he said that they took care of it. I talked to him the day, about two o'clock or so.
Yeah. They didn't go along my, my wall and, and my, there. Uh, I've been, I generally have, um, a guy that works for me go there with, uh, something and, and try to get the grass down. But right now, it's not down.
I could take the mower and, and hit that area if you want.
And there's some kind of cactus there that needs to come up, I think. But, but they, he did go, go up on the north, he was up in the north, and he went around and he made like a little loop, so.
Okay, I, I need to go look and see.
And of course, I don't have a fence for him to work, I mean, my fence is all good, so you don't have to worry about that too much. But, yeah, there've been a lot of cows on that road. When I came home the other night, there must've been twelve of them. And I, oh no, when I got on the road, because they're all laying down on the road. And then they're all getting up, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, I wish I hadn't come down so long road. But, yeah. So, there are, so fast for them to do it in the air.
Um, so the sweeper's gone a lot in most of the year. Um, and I don't know, I don't know what, I don't, it's, it's not clear what the, what, the city doesn't have a sweeper, so the airport sweeper is, is in the city all the time.
We have, we do have a, a regular sweeper. And then I believe the airport sweeper is just a brush, is that correct?
Yeah.
No, we, so we do have two, we do have two sweepers. Um, lots of times when they're being used, sometimes they are left in an area. Um, I would suggest, you know, if we need sweeping, um, I, I invite you all to, to take a look at the, the, right on our city of Bisbee website, there's this reporter concern. It takes you right to, um, our, I work, um, it's, it says citizen engagement type thing.
Yeah.
If we need, if we need a sweeper and it's not there, if it's not there, you can do it. We, and, and that's, we're gonna be, we're definitely gonna be able to better manage, um, our assets and our work. And so, if it's gone and we need it, just put a work order and we can get it. It'll, it'll, you'll notice that you'll start, you'll start to get more work.
Yeah, I noticed that. You guys have been responding really well. Even with the wind socks and the lights, I just put it in and they show up and they're so great.
So, I would suggest, if you, if you'd like me to show you, I can show you. It's fairly easy. If you wanna call and, and talk to Lelena or Sida, they're more than happy to put something for you too.
Okay. So, that was, that was basically it. One was thank you. And, and two, there's a, there's a little bit of three days' worth of work that we really have to do every year no matter what. And then, and then whatever changes do, uh-
Okay. Thank you. I'll pass on your appreciation for the streets department.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, comments by commission members.
I have, I have a comment just to thank the city for allowing Mike to come down. I know the city owns Camp Naco now.
Yes.
But I'm also in that group, trying to, and, and, uh, the mining company did come through with the other five thousand dollars we needed to fix the roof. We needed twelve thousand, we had seven thousand. And, um, Mike is coming, you know. And I think we're going to have something joint with Mexico in November. Uh, they had said something about the twentieth, but that's on Wednesday. So, it's probably going to be the fifteenth or the week before. But I know that, uh, some member of the, uh, Camp Naco group, the volunteer group, is going to be meeting with the city, I think, this week. So, we'll talk about, about that. So, but thank you for allowing that.
Anything else?
No comments, I guess.
It's most progress I've seen in a long time. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everybody.
No comments, meeting just adjourned.
No brownies.
Mike came here for the brownies.